I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer, please? Lord, peace is predicted upon the goodwill, good nature, and general goodness of mankind. Thus war and conflict have been used to settle what goodness alone could not. Our history as a nation is repeat with conflict. It establishes our righteousness beginnings and divided our civil discourse. In the face of these conflicts, there have always been men and women ready to answer their nation's call, and they have inspired us with their sacrifice, honored us with their dedication, and humbled us with their unfathomable courage. Lord be with these men and women. May you stretch a hedge of protection upon them and their families as well. It's in Christ's name I most humbly pray. Amen. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public business meeting, Thursday, November 14th, 2013. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our October 31st, 2013, public business meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, item number one is a presentation for Veterans Day. Mr. Westfall, good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, it is my distinct privilege to read the names of these Allegheny County employees who have identified themselves as veterans of service in the United States Armed Forces who have served our nation with honor and in great personal sacrifice. If you are in the audience tonight, please stand when your name is called. Richard Beckwith, Public Works Engineering, Air Force, six years. Richard Beeman, Sheriff Corrections, United States Marine Corps, four years. Roger Bennett, Emergency Services, U.S. Navy, 24 years. Christopher Biggs, Emergency Medical Services, U.S. Navy, seven years. Richard Blayhut, Public Works, Roads, U.S. Air Force, 24 years. Andre Campbell, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, eight years. Edward Crowe, Public Works Maintenance, U.S. Army, three years. Randy Cutter, Sheriff Patrol, United States Marine Corps. Robert Dick, Public Safety, United States Marine Corps, four years. Harold Dixon III, Sheriff Patrol, U.S. Army. Brian Dolcek, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, three years. Stephanie Frost, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, two years. Melinda Hess, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Air Force, seven years. Robert Hess, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Navy, four years. Gerald Joy, Gaming, U.S. Air Force, six years. Jeffrey Kurgan, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, 15 years. Susan Lee, Emergency Services, U.S. Navy, four years. Kenneth Marx, Public Works, Roads, U.S. Air Force, four years. George McGee, Public Works, Roads, U.S. Army, four years. Jerry Michael, Code Enforcement, U.S. Army, three years. Eric Miller, Public Works Maintenance, United States Marine Corps, four years. Michael Powell, U.S. Navy, six years. Robert Pritchard, Senior, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Navy, 20 years. Larry Schlossnagle, Human Resources Risk Management, U.S. Army, National Guard, 35 years. David Shook, Sheriff Corrections, United States Marine Corps, four years. Wade Sibley, Sheriff Patrol, United States Marine Corps. Craig Simpson, Sheriff Patrol, U.S. Air Force. Vernon Swanger, Allegheny County Transit, U.S. Army, nine years. U.S. Air Force, thirteen and a half years. William R. Valentine, Commissioner, U.S. Army, six years. Frederick Voss, State's Attorney, U.S. Navy, five years. And Reinhard Wolman, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, 17 years. I now invite all veterans present who are not employees of Allegheny County to stand and be recognized. The observance of Veterans Day is an expression of faith in democracy, faith in American values, and faith that those who fight for freedom will defeat those whose cause is unjust. I ask that the names of these veterans be spread across the minutes of this meeting to honor and express our sincere gratitude to all veterans for their unwavering commitment to country, justice, and democracy. Thank you.
Mr. Westfall, we have a official citation. Would you come up and receive that, please, sir? Mr. Wilmont, would you like to join us for your service? Okay. Allegheny County Government Official Citation. Being here known to all, the Board of County Commissioners publicly recognizes Allegheny County veterans, whereas Allegheny County Government wishes to publicly acknowledge the significant contributions of all veterans, men and women, in all services to Allegheny County, the State of Maryland, the United States of America, and the people of the world. And whereas Allegheny County Government is privileged to have employees and retirees who have served in the military, and whereas Allegheny County Government supports all veterans in word and deed, now therefore we, as the county commissioners, take this occasion of this remembrance of Veterans Day 2013 to proudly honor all veterans, past and present, and express our deepest appreciation to the veterans associated with Allegheny County Government, as well as those in our community at large. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands to be caused the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed this 14th day of November in the year 2013. All three county commissioners along with the seal. Thank you, sir.
With respect, may I suggest that if we put that into a better...
Yes.
Great. Shall we gather? Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add to this, I think we all have to recognize that parents of the people who serve, somebody such as Creed, his son fought Afghanistan, Debbie Blacker had a son who fought in those wars, those parents become veterans in their own right while they're waiting for their children to return. And the MIA's veterans who have yet to return, we don't want to forget any of them.
Okay, Commissioners, item number two is Terry, Terry Bennett, is the America Recycles Good evening.
Good evening. Do you have a proclamation, Terry?
Do you?
Sir, I don't.
Well, I do.
He had one, but he recycled it.
You made my heart stop there for that. That wasn't mine.
Not me.
Oh, my gosh.
Would you like to say any words, or you just want to come up?
I just would rather come up.
Okay.
At this point?
Do you think that he can speak this? We're rehearsed this.
Thanks for leaving me out.
Allegheny County Government Proclamation. Whereas Allegheny County Government recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and adopting conscientious habits, and whereas Allegheny County offers extensive recycling options, has achieved a 33.83 percent waste diversion rate and is committed to enhance recycling opportunities, and whereas recycling activities are environmentally effective and economically smart, now therefore we, as the county commissioners, in recognition of the global environmental and economic importance of recycling, we proclaim Friday, November 15th, 2013, as America Recycles Day in Allegheny County, and urge all citizens and stakeholders to participate in recycling activities, reduce waste, recycle, buy recycled content products, reuse, repurpose, and compost. All three county commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Terry.
Thanks, Judge.
I think we're done.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. You do a great job. You really do.
I do have a handout of the although...
Oh, now you want to speak?
That little list...
We'll recycle that time.
...of all the locations in the county that have recycling receptacles, and that we are having a little activity back at the Penmore Recycling Facility, which is our comprehensive site tomorrow for anybody that wishes to stop by. We have a group from one of the schools that's coming over, and then we have some representatives from Frostburg State University that's going to be there, so we all try to work together and achieve the awareness, you know, about what is recyclable in Allegheny County. So thank you very much for helping.
Good luck, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, we'll move into the public hearing part of our meeting. Item number three, gentlemen, is a road opening petition, Allegheny Grove Properties LLC and Robert M. Broadwater. Ronald. What did I say? Did I? I tried to rename the gentleman. I apologize.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Very well, thank you. Set the atrium on behalf of Allegheny Grove Properties and Mr. Broadwater, just submitted William Trazo's petition over the streets. William Miles has sent over the order and the publication for that petition as well.
Okay, correct. That's correct. Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak upon this road opening? Nope. We'll declare this public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, in our action agenda, item number four is the manufacturer tax exemption. Mr. Rudd.
Yes. This is the last vestige of the manufacturer tax exemption issues in Allegheny County. A number of years ago, the Commissioners eliminated the personal property tax for manufacturing equipment, except the state law does still apply to power generating facilities, which AES, of course, is one. They do qualify for any property that they purchase in excess of $50,000 each year. They submit an application. It's been investigated by the Tax Office, and we're recommending that they get the exemption as printed in the motion.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the manufacturer tax exemption for AES Warrior Run Limited Partnership. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, gentlemen, is the Allegheny County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2014 Budget Amendment. Mr. Bittenger, how's Randy this evening?
Great. As you know, the Board of Education has to get County Commissioner approval any time that it wishes to change any of its budget categories or change the total amount of its budget, and the Board has taken an action to increase its budget by using $1 million of its fund balance and requesting to use that for the capital outlay section in its budget for the demolition and construction of Allegheny High School. I think this relates back to almost one year ago where there was discussion in a Board of Education meeting where the Board would like to spend $1 million on that if the county would match it with $1 million. The county responded by increasing its borrowing from 8.2 to 9.2 million, and as staff, we told the Board, we can't see where you've taken an official action. They thought they had, and we just wanted to remove all doubt and took an action in the October meeting just to remove all doubt, and so we're following up with the request tonight to change the budget.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Board of Education to increase the unrestricted fund balance by $1 million for the capital outlay and transfer it to our school construction fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
None.
Okay. I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
One question, not really on this. Randy, do you know what the total cost for the asbestos removal was at the Braddock Site?
I don't think that it's totally complete, but rather than giving out a number in public, what I could do is research that and communicate that through Dr. Cox to you very promptly in the next day or so.
I know there have been some change orders to find more asbestos.
Yes, there was some mold abatement and some things. I can research fully that cost if you'd like that, and I don't know if we can quite break it out between the mold and asbestos, but I can give you a total.
Change orders. Each of those has a value.
Sure.
I was going to say something that wasn't, anyhow. Item number six, I'm sorry, item number seven, request for proposal for the industrial shell building design and build. Some great...
Can we take item number six?
Oh, I do want to do number six.
Those are kind of related. That's why they're pretty good.
That was a very good presentation, Adam. You asked for it.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Patterson. He is a debonair and dashing man. He gets a little embarrassed sometimes.
He needs to barge our glasses.
Gentlemen, how about item number six, the Allegheny County Board of Education Capital Improvement Program Fiscal Year 2015. Mr. Patterson, what say you?
Thank you, sir. What do you have before you? I used a request, a letter of support for the Board's capital improvement program in which they've submitted downstate. Specifically, what we're looking at is local support for fiscal year 15 projects, which include a Washington metal roof replacement and the continued support of Allegheny High School replacement. Local funds that they're seeking for each for fiscal year 15, Allegheny is $0, local money in fiscal year 15, and approximately $137,000 in fiscal year 15 for the roof replacement, Washington Metal. Both projects have been in our CIP for quite some time and have been on your radio screen as well.
Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2015 CIP program.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you like me to escort you back?
It's okay.
Gentlemen, item number seven, is a request for proposal for the industrial shell building design and build. It's like Groundhog Day again. I remember reading that. Got some good news for us there, Mr. Diaz?
Yes, I believe so. Good evening, I guess, Commissioners. The item number seven, request for proposals, is, as you said, for a design-build for a 40,000-square-foot industrial shell building at the Barton Business Park on Route 220 South. As you know, back in 2004, the county worked in conjunction with the State of Maryland to acquire the land, put the infrastructure into the park, a park which now houses American Woodmark, so, and working with the state and developing a plan to take that park to the next step. As I said, working with the state, we've decided that an industrial shell building would be a good first step to begin a market to new tenants. So what the design-build will do, the request for proposal, is to ask qualified firms who have experience with similar projects, a work history of such, and the ability to meet our schedule, to basically send in their resumes, which a team here in the county will review, make a short list from that, and working in conjunction with Adam Patterson and the Department of Public Works, we will select a qualified firm, design-build firm, to construct that building for the county. And as you said, it's a great piece of news, something that our building stock is basically depleted in that size of building. Our hope is that we will build this building to the point that it will be expandable another 40,000 square feet, and again, this is what I'm here tonight, to ask for your approval to advertise the RFP. And just one more thing I'll add, I've spoken to County Administrator Everly. Next week when we go to Barton, I'd like to take a few minutes and kind of just go back over the last couple of months, talk to the Commissioners about the four or five projects that we have in the queue right now, how they tie not only back to our capital project list, but also to our strategic plan that is roughly a year old now, so I think we'll do a short presentation on that and kind of tie all this up. But tonight, I'm here just to ask you for the approval for the first step to get this process underway.
I love good economic news, sir. Thank you for doing that. Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to approve the advertisement of the request for proposal for the design-build services for construction of a 40,000-square-foot industrial shell building in the Barton Business Park. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda today, sir?
Commissioners, today on the consent agenda, you're being asked to consider action on six items. We have a board appointment that will address a vacancy on the county's Board of Zoning Appeals. You're also being asked to formally accept grants from State Homeland Security, as well as the annual capital and operating grants for our Transit Division, and to execute the annual community partnership agreement with the Children's Cabinet in support of our local management board. We also have a travel request for C-3I narcotics, and we do have a bid award for the Braddock Road-Park Avenue intersection and approach plan, and I'd like to share the podium right now, or a microphone, with Elizabeth Stallman, who'd like to speak to that issue just briefly.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. As Mr. Everly said, I'm here on behalf of the Braddock Road-Park Avenue intersection project, and this project is happening in the city of Frostburg with your blessing. The county, and Sierra and Roy in particular, approached me about six months ago about a planning transportation opportunity in Frostburg, and this area in Frostburg has kind of been an issue that we've recognized as a city for some time now, and it has been in the consolidated transportation plan for the past several years. So at this intersection, three city streets and alley and Braddock Road, which is a state highway, converge, and a substantial amount of pedestrians also travel through this intersection as they're trying to make their way to the campus. So it's our hope that this traffic study will guide the design of a preliminary plan that will enhance the intersection in terms of both level of service and safety. Plans for improvement are necessary because we all know the university will continue to grow, and so will the vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Stakeholders, including State Highway Administration, the university, and area residents, will be involved in the planning process to ensure that the project aligns with master plans for the organizations involved and is feasible given the constraints. The preliminary design will be used in order to plan for the next phase of the intersection improvement project. Sierra prepared the RFP for this project, and on October 1st, seven proposals were received. The proposals were reviewed by representatives from State Highway, Frostburg State University, and the city, and the selection committee has recommended that the contract be awarded to Bennett Brewer and Associates of Frostburg. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have, otherwise I thank you again for your support of this project.
Elizabeth, the timing moving forward?
The traffic study will be completed, hopefully, before the semester ends so that they can count the pedestrian traffic as well, so, and then...
As in this semester?
Yes, and then the whole project should be done by May 1st of next year.
Oh, good. All right, Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion that we authorize the president of the county commissioners or the county administrator to sign the contract to award this bid. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify.
So moved.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. My only comment is that whoever designed the Roundar Rec on 220, you don't get that. I'm thinking about, you know, we don't have an amusement park here in Allegheny County, and I think we can call that the State Highway Administration amusement park, and we can give tickets, and we could, you know, it could be a... Anyhow.
Commissioners, as a point of order, could we entertain a motion here to accept the other five items on the consent agenda as well?
We will. We will. But that's a big deal up there in Frostburg.
That's a huge deal.
Really, I'm not sure it should have just been a consent. It should have been for all of it, and an action. You and I will talk. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain our consent agenda, except for the one that we just did. Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine, and approved by Mother Hen Dave Everly. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You should never overreact. You know, he could be one of the topics of the therapist tomorrow.
Yours or his?
Oh, his therapist. He says I'm driving him.
Which is you.
That's right. So I understand you... Now, Mr. Everly, do you have anything?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Rudd?
I have nothing.
It's a very good-looking tie that you have there, sir.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen...
Now we know what happened to the drapes.
Did you? Actually, it's a nice-looking tie. Please note that for the record that Mr. Rudd did actually spend some money. I assume it was your money.
Yes.
All right. Commissioners, Commissioner Brody.
First of all, I'd like to take a moment here and recognize Commissioner Ronald May sitting in the background. Welcome, Commissioner. It's good to see you out this evening. Just a brief little thing of what we recently did at the airport, because I haven't seen you in a while at a public meeting, and either one of you is. We decided to expand our board over there by one member. We're going to add, the board voted at the last meeting to add an ex officio member, at which time we're going to, the letter should be sent or on its way to FSU for Dr. Dibroctor, someone of his picking, that he can add in, since they're a big help in our economic development, and we got lots of things going on over there, so whoever he should designate, and it's also offered that as this project moves forward over the years, because we definitely don't want to tie him up for everything, that he can also... Just a brief little thing of what we recently did at the airport, because I haven't seen you in a while at a public meeting, and either one of you is. We decided to expand our board over there by one member. We're going to add, the board voted at the last meeting to add an ex officio member, at which time we're going to, the letter should be sent or on its way to FSU for Dr. Dibrother, someone of his picking, that he can add in, since they're a big help in our economic development and we got lots of things going on over there, so whoever he should designate, and it's also offered that as this project moves forward over the years, because we definitely don't want to tie him up for everything, that he can also decide in his stead to designate someone from Potomac State or ACM in the future if he so desires as the programs come online. So, just a little bit of good news that's going on.
That is real good news.
But other than that, I have not much to say this evening.
Okay, Commissioner Valentine?
We have another Marcellus shale study commission meeting coming up very shortly, and back when this all began about two and a half years ago, the state informed us that they had placed stream water quality monitors in two streams in Garrett County, monitoring the water quality of two streams flowing out of Marcellus Fields in West Virginia. I asked about, the information had been gathered by those monitors three months ago. They hadn't bothered to collect any of the information from these monitors. Now, we spent two years wondering if this could cause contamination of groundwater and such, but they hadn't checked for this information. I asked again two months ago, still got no information. That time, the excuse was, well, we'd had the federal government shut down, and that kept them from getting information. Now, these were state people getting information from state monitors for the last two years. So finally today, I did get the information, and all this worry we've got about contamination, there has been absolutely no change in the water quality of those two streams flowing straight through Marcellus Shale Field. So it's nice that the state spent money putting these monitors in. I think it'd be nice if they'd spend time checking their information, too. I'm sure we'll discuss this at our next meeting.
So, Bill, how long, again, have they been in place?
Been in place for two and a half years.
So two and a half years, no contamination...
No contamination.
...whatsoever.
Nothing.
And Commissioner, I believe recently, Ohio finished up its study, and the Department of Environment, Pennsylvania, or it was one other, that finished up last week, and they with several year studies and this...
Actually, EPA's done studies, and they have found no contamination to residential drinking wells, no contamination to streams from the fracking process.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, looks like the couple people that signed up on the signup sheet have already had their time at the podium. I'd like to remind everybody that our next public business meeting will be November the 21st, 2013, at 5:00 in a different venue. This is going to be at the Barton Town Hall at 19018 Legislative Road in Barton, so hope to see everybody down there. I'd like to remind everyone to look at the news release about the Allegheny County Commissioners meeting in Barton, as well as the Allegheny County Thanksgiving schedule. If there is nothing else on anybody else's desk, I'd like to thank everyone for attending and participating in your government, and we hope you have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.